Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roke?
Alderman Tobin?
Here.
Alderman Jean-François?
Here.
Alderman Johnson?
Here.
Alderman Ram Cassoun?
Here.
Alderman Kleiner?
Here.
Alderman Green?
Here.
Alderman Witt?
Here.
Alderman Massey?
Here.
President Rodriguez?
Here.
Form is present.
Correspondents?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward. All right, remarks of the mayor.
Okay. It's a reminder, and I'm sure Jerry will go into it, that Tuesday, a week from today, is election day. We in the city are once again hosting early voting. The early voting is available to any voter in Orange County at the Middletown site or at any of the sites within the county. Okay, okay. And we also, there are some limited hours that we are providing, once again, free rides to the polls for early voting. So the, those hours are posted daily and are also on our website. And we're trying to increase the hours. Right now, I think it's mostly mornings, weekday mornings. You can call the senior center. You don't have to be a senior to get a ride. It's apolitical. We don't ask you who you're voting for, what party you are, just as long as you're a Middletown resident and you need a ride to the polls, we will pick you up and bring you to vote, and then you can go home and wait to see who won on election day. So we're just trying to encourage everyone to get out. The, you know, community needs to send a message that we have people here that are interested in what's happening in Albany and in Washington, and whatever side of the aisle you're on, we need to, we need to get out and vote. So hopefully you will exercise that. Tonight, we're just going to touch on the budget. And the proposed budget is not yet posted on our city website, but will be shortly. But I'm going to go through it briefly with you folks here. We do have a public hearing that's planned to be held on Wednesday, November 9th, at 4:30. And that will be, and the budget will be posted much prior to that for a public review. And the approval and adoption of the budget will be on Tuesday, November 15th. Hopefully approved and adopted that night. Going through it, you can see the 22 and 23 numbers. Our operations, we've had an increase in operations from 6,500 to 7.1 million. Special items are, personal services are up slightly. Employee benefits are up slightly. Debt service is being converted from bands, and this is bands, bond anticipation notes, and long-term debt. The pension costs, as you can see, have reduced slightly. And, or a smaller part of our budget this year. And workman's comp has also gone down. And that primarily is due to some of the changes that we've made over the years. And A, in how we handle claims. And B, although we don't have the analysis in, but I could tell you, I believe the sanitation trucks over the last few years have been very helpful. As you remember, if you recall, the sanitation was 50% of our workman's comp claims at one point. And we don't, we don't see the claims on that level. Health insurance has gone up almost a million, almost a million dollars. I can tell you that we're working with our unions to give other options. We've had some very favorable discussions with some of the unions and that will hopefully bring those long-term costs down, our short-term and long-term costs down on health insurance. Payroll taxes are up slightly, so the total of employee benefits has a slight increase. We are at the tax cap for the 10th or 11th year in a row. The water and sewer rates will go up about 34 cents from 1717 combined to 1751. And the appears the average, and if I'm looking at this correctly, Leonora, the average home would have a $62 increase in property taxes for 2023. So overall, we have a 6% increase in expenses. Current inflation is 8.2, so we're below the current inflation rate. Areas of increase are the health insurance, as I mentioned. It's increased at over 10% rate. Supply and demand on materials and supplies has really impacted us tremendously. Our parks and recreation programs have expanded. And pools, for example, pool maintenance, our cost of energy is going up huge, as everyone else in the world. But we expect about a $350,000 a year increase in electric kilowatt hour expense based on our contract with M&amp;R Energy, the bids that at least that are coming in. The debt service payment is, we use 350,000 of the debt service fund balance. There's no other trickery in the budget. There's no money being transferred from fund balance into the general fund or from water fund. Tax levy is below the tax cap set by New York State. And on the plus side, we are expecting an increase in New York State sales tax for three quarters of 2023 based on the future contract extension between Orange County and the three cities. So we'll get this out to you, and we will also get it posted. And if there's any questions from the public, we certainly would respond prior to the public hearing. But, and also to you folks, but the public hearing is scheduled, as I said, for the, for the 15th. And hopefully we'll get some feedback. We do not have any additional employees added into the, into the, either for police or for fire. We are working on some creative ways to increase service without increasing police or firemen. And so, but that is not a budget issue. That will be actually a budget-saving issue. But we can't put it into the plan at this point. So if you have any questions, I'd take them now, but, or you can study it and come back and feel free to email me or give me a call.
Any questions from the mayor? Okay, thank you.
I want to thank the council president and the finance chairman, Mr. Massey, for their hard work. And also Leonora and her staff for all the hours that we put in, put in the budget together. You didn't think I'd say thank you, did you?
You're a good man.
Yeah, thank you.
Sometimes.
Why'd you thank him?
All right, remarks of the department head, the DPW commissioner.
Good evening. So our reservoirs, Alderman Massey, are 84.3% capacity. So we're in good shape, but still, we haven't had that much rain. So hopefully we'll have some much more rain to fill it up, fill the reservoirs up. Today, we had, we advised the public last time, and you, that we have a project out for bid for upgrading the three dams for Shuanggang reservoir. Today, we had the pre-bid meeting, which all the contractors will come out, ask questions, understand what the project is all about. So we had like eight contractors today, which is great for us. Hopefully, we will get favorable numbers when we open the bids in November, well, in November 22nd, I believe, the bid opening. But it's on our website. With that being said, we have, with our water-taking permit from the DEC, we had conditions in there as part of the water-taking permit, which is to install flow meters at different places. Two of them, we have installed by October 28th, which is the date given to us by the DEC. And that is for Indigo Creek and for Mill Pond. So the flow meters are there and functioning. We're supposed to use them only when we are pumping. And we are not pumping, obviously, because we still have plenty of water and we're in good shape. So another condition of the water-taking permit is to install flow meters, two of them at Kenshore's reservoir, and one of them at, at Shuanggang. And those are an extensive operation that we have to do. It's not an easy construction or easy installation like we did with the other two. So they are being incorporated into the dam upgrade projects. The dam upgrade, upgrade project is for Shuanggang and another one for Kenshore. Right now, we have the Shuanggang upgrade out for bid right now. Hope, we're hoping for, in another week, we will get out the plans to bid the improvement for Kenshore reservoir. After which, during which, the installation of the flow meter required by the DEC will be done. So the DEC is not, they're saying, well, you haven't met your deadlines. But they understand it was their idea to incorporate the flow meters in the dam upgrade construction for Kenshore and for Shuanggang. So it's a long story to say that. We are working with the DEC to meet that, their, their target dates for the installation of the flow meters. But they are being incorporated, they are incorporated into the dam upgrade projects, which means it's going to take a little bit more time. So we're hoping towards November next year, the flow meters will be functioning and the DEC will be happy with that. We're hoping they will be happy with that. The, before you tonight, there is a resolution to increase the compensation for the contract for water treatment plant operator, that's a private operator in there. Part of the increase will be to cover retired operator from the city of Middletown, that he, we cannot fill that position. We've been looking for water treatment plant operators for a few years with the help of the civil service office, Alderman Massey. And we're having the same issue with the wastewater treatment plant, and that's an issue throughout New York State. It's not only specific to us with the lack of certified operators and qualified operators. So before you, is that increase, the increase looks huge, but when you break it down into providing, supplementing the hours for an operator, licensed operator, and then you go back and increase their annual contract with us by 35%, you know, it will make some sense, the increase. It still looks, looks high. They asked for much higher number. They asked for $376,000. After negotiating with them, we cut it down to 288, $288,000 per year. We have to remember that this company, it was family-owned company. The father or the founder of the company just retired. He's been working with us since 2011. He never asked for a penny in increase in his contract, and he did a great job for us. And now he retired. So his, the new company got purchased by a Canadian company. And now everybody has to get paid the fair market price. And they showed us the number, the numbers and how much they're paying people and how much compensation they're asking for. And the numbers make sense of what they are providing for us. So that does not preclude us from looking for other operators in the future and so on and so forth. And, you know, they might be the best operators for us in the future as well. But the city is still looking and will be looking in the future. And, but for now, we ask for your support to, to support the increase in this contract. Another issue is the leaves, because I don't want to just talk too much here. The leaves, please, many people are not listening to us. We don't want to start issuing violations. Hold back the leaves, put the leaves, keep the leaves in the front of your yard until you see the date of when we're going to pick up the leaves in your ward. Again, don't put it all at once, because November 7th, or whatever the date is, I believe it's November 7th, right, Jerry? Yeah, November, November 7th, when you're allowed to put the leaves in the street, just hold it back. Don't put it all in the street, because it provides hazardous conditions, especially if we have some snow or ice or something like that in November, you don't know. So just keep it in front, front of your, in your front yard as much as you can, please. And don't put it in the street until after November 7th. We appreciate that very much. Any questions?
Any question for Jacob? Alderman Jean-François?
Commissioner, can you tell us what's the, what's the purpose for the flow meters?
For the flow meters? It's, it will help us and would help, it will help the DEC as well to monitor how much flow is going from one reservoir to another reservoir, to transfer water from one reservoir to another. And also how much water we are discharging or allowing to go into the stream to support the aquatic life in the stream, downstream. Of course, the city, it's been functioning like this for 100 years. It never had the flow meters. This is the first time we're going to be installing them as a condition of the DEC to give us the water-taking permit and allowing us to expand our water district to supply the psychiatric center out of 17, 17 AM and Goshen with water and sewer and Amy's kitchen to give them water and all that stuff. That's part, it's all evolution with our water-taking permit by, by the DEC to get to that point. Which is, we support it, we're not against it, we agreed with it. You know, it's going to take some money and some effort, and it's going to be valuable data for us even to collect, more than the DEC. But the DEC is the one who asked for it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Tobin?
My question for the commissioner, is there other operators that if this company does not work out, we can find? I mean, I know, I'm not really in favor of privatization, but I did vote the last time because we're in a rock and a hard place. It was a health and safety issue. But like, it bothers me that a company from Canada is now in charge of our wastewater treatment. I mean, I don't know, I mean.
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer. That if, if they, are there other operators that could take over or we could get if it doesn't work out this company? Or do they?
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be, we'll be looking. Eventually, we'll have to advertise this project for public bidding.
Okay.
And for those private positions. And I will talk to you offline, the mayor and I, about what other, what other things we, because we are, we are in conversation with the unions as well.
Okay. Yeah, I know, that's unfortunate.
Yeah, yeah, we've been advertising in the paper.
The reason why we're here with a private company is because, as Jacob said, there's only 33 operators statewide licensed for this. But we've been giving the test and no one's been giving it, or taking it. So we, we don't have the ability to hire an employee, which forces us to go to the private sector. And these companies, and, you know, these are not eight-hour-a-day contracts with the, you know, these are companies that are overseeing and light the licensing. They have that special license that's required for a water treatment plant of our size. So we're, we're between a rock and a hard place. And, but once we are able to work out things with the union, then we can bid things either long distance or there was discussions the other day about trying to get somebody internally. But unfortunately, no one's taking the test. So if anyone's listening and they want a nice career, I mean, the, water treatment operator, these licenses are, they're very valuable. People are making a big, big buck on it, but it's out of our control regarding city employees. We've given every opportunity to the staffing at all the, both water and wastewater, to give them the education and necessary time to become licensed. And, but it's not only here, it's all over the state. So that's the position we're in, and that's why we're, the numbers look big, but when you consider taking the other position out and the fact that there hasn't been an increase in so many years, it seems almost, almost reasonable. But, but we will bid it at some point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, also one more thing, also, the mayor is 100% right. We put even ads in the paper, we put ads in, indeed, the civil services advertising, you know, to come and take the test in their usual channels, and there are no takers. But also, what's important is it doesn't mean just, just to have the license. We have people who have licenses in there, they can operate, they're qualified. The license will allow them to operate the plant, but unfortunately, they're not, you can't do it. So it's not only getting the license, it's also being, having the talent and the capability to run it. You know, you have good doctors, you have bad doctors, you know. You know, it doesn't mean every doctor can run their own business.
Alderman Jean-François?
Do we know when the next test is taking place?
Yeah, it's been, Alderman Massey's, the civil service will advertise that. And they advertise it a couple of times, or we've been through this iteration a couple of times. To finish what the mayor was saying, we had one operator in there, he just finished his licensing without even obtaining his license. We hired him immediately on a letter from the Department of Health, saying that this guy, he met all the requirements. We hired him on the spot, and he's part of the union right now. He's, you know, he's working for us. So if we find them, we'll get him in there. It doesn't mean they can become chief, chief operator, but they can become operator, shift operators. And shift operators, it's okay, they can manage. But the chief operator, it's a whole different level, although you may have the license for it.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you, Jacob. I just want to reemphasize the point that we've hired these people for the past 11 years, and they have not raised their contract price ever to us.
Absolutely, since 2011, absolutely.
Yeah, how he was able to do that, I'm not sure, but now it's caught up with us, so.
Yeah, it's, it's basically, like you said, Jerry Alderman, because it's a family-owned business. The guy, he owned the business, so he took pride of running Middletown, he literally did.
Yeah.
And he wasn't going to get rich of us. But now, the new company now has, they have to pay salaries for different people. He owned the company, he was making good money, he was happy. So now a different, different regime and.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for bringing that up, too.
Thank you, Jacob. City treasurer?
Good evening, I have no remarks for tonight. Do you have any questions for me?
Any question? Thank you. Please, chief.
Good evening. Um, last, two weeks ago, I had Detective Charles Nylan retire from the department after 20 years. So I just want to publicly, publicly recognize him and thank him for his 20 years of service to Middletown. Before he became a police officer with us, he was actually a teacher at the Middletown High School. And I just want to wish him luck in the next chapters of his life. He was a great asset, and he will definitely be missed. In regards to our police commission meeting, this month's meeting has been rescheduled from the 17th to the 21st due to a scheduling issue on my behalf. And lastly, just like to, I know I did share an email with all the council members, but just publicly addressed that Police Officer Evan Barone has been awarded the 2020 New York State Police Officer of the Year Award. It's such an honor. It does not bring Officer Barone back, it does not take away his injuries, it does not address any of that. However, it is an honor that he's been recognized by New York State as the Police Officer of the Year for 2020. So I just want to put that out there. And just recently, we just had the sentencing of the individual that shot Officer Barone. And we're pleased, being that it was not just an attack on here, on our own police officer, but police in general. And the individual that was responsible for shooting Officer Barone was sentenced to 58 and a half years in prison. So we appreciate the court's findings in that, in that matter. Other than that, I have nothing else unless you have questions.
Any questions for the police chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening, everyone. Just like to thank everyone who donated candy for our numerous Halloween events that we had. I do love October, but I am very glad that Halloween and all these trunk-or-treats are over. We did have a very successful dog costume contest at the dog park. If you went by on Saturday, that parking lot was jam-packed with people with the dog park Halloween costume. Thank you to the city clerk's office, who was there registering some of the city of Middletown residents' dogs there also. Also, thank you to the Middletown Fire Department and Police Department, who did come to a lot of our Halloween events, especially the Little Wreckers toddler program that we have, that they came and gave out candy. And the fire department, who also came and showed the kids the trucks and did the whole fire safety unit with the kids. We have a Thanksgiving food drive that the mayor's youth council is currently working on. You'll see boxes in city hall and also in our department as well. So we are taking canned goods and any non-perishable things to pack Thanksgiving baskets. November 19th, we are going to have a skateboard contest, obviously, at the skate park. We are in the process of securing the, the prizes and the giveaways for the contest and starting registration very shortly for, from little kids all the way up through adults. And it's their own women and girls bracket also for the contest. We are starting to plan our winter events, our winter sports clinics, our winter recreation activities, and also, most importantly, our free rec fitness programs that are going to continue throughout the winter. We're very happy that our college kids are coming home for Thanksgiving. We're going to have a meeting with, I'd probably say, 80% of our college kids that work for us over the summer that do an amazing job and start planning winter activities for that long break that they're home. A lot of them are college athletes and they play specialty sports. So we're looking to either do a few nights a week or one night, two nights, two-week, three-week programs while they're home. And like I said, specialty programs for specialty sports that our college athletes are very good at. And most importantly, mid-November, we are looking forward to having our ice skating rink set up. It will, mid-November, to be here, set up, and we just ordered all the supplies needed for it. So that should be here also, hopefully, by mid-November to get that up and running. Any questions?
Any questions for Rayland? Thank you. Corporation council?
I don't have anything tonight unless somebody's got some questions for me.
Any question for our corporation council? Thank you, Alex. City clerk?
I just want to thank Parks and Rec and Rayland for inviting us out to the dog park this weekend. We've been trying to expand some of our city clerk services outside normal working hours. We partnered with the school district last week, and we offered municipal IDs at one of their events, and we're going to be doing it again in two weeks. So thank you for the opportunity and working with you guys.
Questions for the city clerk? Okay. Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey?
Yeah, I have two things. One, the city clerk just finished his presentation. I just want to tell him, I'm sorry I wasn't here at last meeting. And I was extremely disappointed that a former employee that was given pretty much the city and came here and tried to embarrass you and embarrass the leadership of the city of Middletown. Everyone makes mistakes, and maybe you made one, maybe you didn't. I've been here 18 years, and I've made some. But for him to come here and do what he did was just not called for. And I'm assuming he will be back again, and I will be the wrath of his comments. I could care less. But I want to tell you, I think you've been doing an outstanding job, and I'm happy you're here. And I'm, I'm hoping that those comments did not negatively affect you and that under no circumstances will you leave. Second, election day is coming up. Early voting has started, and I believe, Mr. Mayor, that it's, I was told, because I did vote early myself, it was 7 to 3 Monday through Friday. That's what I was told over to senior center. Okay. Okay. Anyway, if you haven't voted, please remember a couple of things when you go in to vote. Whether it's economics, whether it's the city, the one thing that's pretty constant, we have to take care of our local law enforcement. We don't want crime to take us over. We have an excellent, and I mean an excellent, police force. They do their job. When you're going to vote, please know the candidates you're going to vote for and make sure that they encourage and support our police department. I happen to know of an incident where Middletown has put many hours in, the police have done their job, have had contact with an individual 147 times, arrested him 48 times. He knows the system, plays it well, and is just always back out there. So please, support the people that support our police departments. And do make sure you get out there to vote. Thank you.
Alderman Witt?
Thank you very much. Just one thing, I wanted to mention that our ward meeting will be next Wednesday, November 9th, at 5:30. It'll be here in the common council chamber, second floor of city hall. We had some questions last time about the Twin Towers renovations, that referendum- passed last December, but I'll have some information, some of the, the visual aids that we had from a year ago there, if anyone wants to see what the proposed finished product will look like. So hope to see you. Thank you.
Alderman Green.
Thank you very much. The only thing I have this evening is that on Monday, the fourteenth, will be the second ward constituents' meeting here at City Hall at seven PM. So even though it'll seem weird, it is, it is actually the second Monday, so Monday, November fourteenth at seven PM. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. We voted on Saturday and I, I do want to thank the people who are making that possible, all the election workers and what's going on around the country, threats to election workers because you don't like the results. That we, it really, making a threat against an election worker ought to be a crime in itself and ought to be prosecutable. So I, I thank them, I remind people, yes, early, early voting is through, it's through Sunday, November sixth and Sunday, nine to five, and then next Tuesday, November eighth, will be Election Day. Don't forget to flip your ballot over because on the back of it is the environmental bond and I hope everyone will vote in favor of New York being able to bond really important environmental issues to help keep our water clean or air clean, our planet safe to live on. So everybody, please, go vote. Next Friday, November eleventh, is Veterans Day and the American Legion in Post 151 will be doing a Veterans Day recognition celebration. And that, of course, is the eleventh day of the eleventh month at the eleventh hour, so no one should be confused as to the time. It's always the same, so please come out for that. I, I, well, one, one thing quickly, Board of Estimate meetings, which have always been at four-thirty on Thursdays, have lately been at three o'clock on Thursdays or three-thirty. And I want to make sure that people know that and know if you're interested in watching a Board of Estimate meeting, that make sure you look at the city calendar so that you're there in time. I know I missed a couple of them because I, I didn't catch on early enough that they, they were doing it early to accommodate people's schedules and I understand that, so just be aware of that. I just want to make one comment on the difference between misinformation and disinformation. And misinformation, anybody can make a mistake, the information can be incorrect. Disinformation, which we see so much of, is intentional. And when you still claim that Donald Trump won the election, that is disinformation. And the argument against it is not that there's no, there's no proof that, that Biden didn't win, it's that there is overwhelming evidence that it was a free and fair election, the most free and fair election we've ever had. There's overwhelming recount after recount, court case after court case, so it's not just the negative, it's the positive. And if you don't know how to tell fact from fiction that way, you, you need to go back to school for a little while. It's just unbelievable. So I, I urge people to vote like, like your democracy depended on it because it really does. Thank you.
Alderman Cassoon.
Good evening. I just wanted to make sure I said congratulations and well-deserved for Officer Barone. So new to the force and obviously so highly trained to have handled that situation the way that he did, so I'm proud of him for the award and my thoughts are with him and his family and we keep wishing for his quick return to full health. For the budget, I know you did a great job, Lenora, and my, you know, thanks to the Board of Estimate and our finance committee and all our department heads who somehow managed to make those numbers work every year, you guys do a great job. That's really all I have today, I'll just leave it at that. Go and vote, 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 don't forget.
Alderman Johnson.
Thank you. I, I agree, kudos to the, all of the people involved in the budget process, thank you so much. I was gonna let the last meeting lie, but Mr. Massey's opened the door, I had the inadvertent opportunity to chair the meeting and I was somewhat taken unawares by the speaker's comments and perhaps I was deferring to his status as a former chief of police, but there are three items that need to be corrected. Number one, they're for the future, not for me. Yesterday's gone, I screwed it up, can't do it over. There is a four-minute time limit, seven minutes is not four minutes. The speaker should have known better. Secondly, the speaker identified himself as an ADA advocate and then proceeded to discuss in detail an employee's medical history and status. I'm not sure that that is accurate, I'm not sure it doesn't violate HIPAA regulations, but once again, I didn't know of such a category as an advocate for ADA. And number three, and most importantly, I should have called the point of order. If you want to, if anybody comes to this microphone and wants to critique a process, have at it. Once you put an employee's name into the mix, you could have easily said the process was not followed, it was twenty days, it was forty-six days, but once you put the person's name into it, I should have called the point of order and told the speaker, you can proceed accordingly, according to these rules, or you can stop speaking. It's water under the bridge, but it needs to be said for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Francois.
Yes, good evening. Our fourth ward constituents' meeting will be here this Saturday, November fifth, from ten o'clock to eleven, and Swaroop and I will be here, Alderman Massey.
Where do you plan on having it? Did you say this week?
Correct, this week and this Saturday.
We have a test. We'll talk.
Okay. Only, just to be clear, it won't be here in this.
Okay, we can have it in your office, is that okay?
Oh, absolutely, I just, but I don't want people, because we have a test that day.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Upstairs, from ten to eleven, Swaroop will be here, please come join us, thank you.
Alderman Tobin.
Just like to thank Kevin Gomez from the school board for, and the mayor for supporting his resolution, calling for a separate aid category, or separate, yeah, aid for schools to provide security for our children. I mean, we have guards in banks, we have guards at the mall, we have guards at, you know, jewelry stores, you know, federal buildings, judges, I think it's, courtrooms, I think there's nothing more precious than our students and our children and our community and they should be guarded as well. So thank you. Yes, go out and vote, I agree, and do your homework, I mean, there's so much propaganda out there, especially if you watch YouTube, you know, my, my children are sick of the commercials on either side, you know, so, you know, do your homework, you know, there's a lot of propaganda, just, you know, I really encourage people, there's, each side has websites, check it out and don't believe the fear mongering and some of the stuff you see on the negative commercials, which really turns people off to politics because, you know, you see, oh, this guy's horrible, this guy's horrible, and people want him saying, I hate both sides, you know, so really, I encourage people to do their homework and, and vote what's important for them. Thank you.
New business.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois declaring a secret notice lead agency designation and determination of nonsignificance for a two-lot subdivision at Sub Street and Beers Drive.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey requesting that the county of Orange to exempt properties of the city of Middletown from certain county real estate taxes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt accepting a one hundred and sixty-nine dollar and fifteen cent donation from the Kiwanis Club of Middletown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Jean Francois, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson declaring a fifty-foot strip of land in front of Sixth Manhattan Avenue as surplus and authorizing a quit clean, a quit claimed deed conveying said property to the owner.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green authorizing an increase in the Corporation Council's litigation rate.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner authorizing an agreement with New York Cooperative Liquid Asset Security Systems.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey authorizing waiving building permit and hookup fees for fifty-two Broad Street.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin authorizing budget transfers totaling fifty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars in the police department budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Jean Francois, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey authorizing amendment number four to the B&L contract for additional construction administration and construction observation services.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey authorizing amendment number four to the B&L contract for additional construction administration and construction observation services.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.